This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
We are going to call to order. Good evening, East Hampton. We are going to officially call to order our regular session school committee meeting for the evening of Tuesday, June 10th, 2025. Uh, we're gonna roll call in. We're gonna begin with Tim St. John. Say here, present.
Present.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Eric.
Here.
Megan, here. Sam.
Here.
Linda.
Here.
Mayor?
Here.
Laura Scott, present. Uh, so, good evening, everyone. Uh, we're gonna begin with what you've, those really astute observers will notice, is a new face amongst us. Um, we are here to both officially say farewell to our former member, Ben Hershey, who did send in his official resignation, which I believe we addressed at our last meeting. So replacing him for the remainder of this term is Tim St. John, who is the next highest vote getter in the election. Congratulations and thank you so much for your service, Tim.
Oh, you're quite welcome.
Tim was sworn in today and we are so excited. Um, he's been a really active and enthusiastic community member for as long as I have heard him. And we're just so blessed and excited. Looking forward.
Really happy to be here.
Thank you for joining us. Um, we are going to move on to gifts. Megan?
All right. Um, so we have, um, a gift of two Promethean interactive panels. Do you have background on who donated those?
Or what they are?
Or what they are.
Mm-hmm.
I have no idea what they are.
Are you looking for a mic?
Oh, yeah, take them.
Share that with them.
So they were donated to the high school. And the interactive panels are, um, panels where you can have messages. Uh, you put messages on them and they can go to, you know.
So it's like a next-gen smart board?
Yeah, it's kinda like a, like that. I don't remember the name of the person. Do you remember who came from? I can't remember. I forget. But whoever it was, I just wanna make sure that they know that we are thankful that, uh, they did give them to the high school.
Do we have an idea of how they're gonna be implemented? Or maybe they, maybe high school staff has to figure out where they're gonna be put to best use?
I, I think that, um, Bill Evans is going to decide.
Okay.
Along with Sue Wilson, where they belong in the high school.
We could do 90s style, put them on those roll carts like we used to with TVV CRs.
I'm sure they'll be well-used in a good place.
Excellent. We're so, so very grateful.
Maybe we can update at a future meeting.
Yeah.
Take a picture of them. Whoever it was that gave us this gift and then how they're being used.
That sounds great.
Okay, lovely. Uh, in the meantime, I'd like to make a motion.
Do we have to approve that gift, Sue?
Yes.
Uh, motion to approve the donation of two Promethean interactive panels to EHS. May I get a second?
Second.
Thank you, Sam. Um, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you all. And thank you for that excellent donation. And we are gonna do a follow-up announcement as soon as we can procure the name of the generous anonymous donor. Student representative update. Well, this is actually that, that fun time of year where, um, our high school representative, Asta Patel, just graduated on Friday. Uh, we did award her with a certificate of recognition for her service to the school committee and also gave her a small gift and thanks as we do. Thank you again to Sue Colby, who is tireless and remembering all those really important details. Um, so Asta will not be here this evening. Uh, we also have a representative from Mountain View School, who's Kenzie Askew. And similarly, we have a certificate of recognition for Kenzie, which we will be handing out to her at their convocation ceremony this coming week. Um, so thank you to both excellent students, great role models, and we're so grateful to have the opportunity to hear from them about the actual goings-on inside our buildings. Uh, moving on to public comment, if anyone in the room with us tonight or joining us virtually has any comments they would like to share, we would ask if you step forward or raise your hand at this time. We'll give that 30 seconds just to see if anyone is interested in sharing their thoughts this evening. I would like the Jeopardy music for this. Make it less awkward for me. Seeing none, we are going to close public comment and move on to one quick item that was a little bit of a surprise, that didn't make it onto the agenda, but was a high matter of importance to us as a school committee. So I would like to take a moment to recognize Maureen Benenda, who still has a few weeks left. Um, she will be serving as our superintendent through June 30th. She's been with us for the past two years. But this is her last meeting with us. And so, um, I would love to begin by just allowing the members to kind of go around and share their thoughts, because everyone expressed an interest in giving their own thoughts of gratitude for Maureen. Would anyone in particular like to start? I would typically start on this end, Tim. Would you like to start, Tim?
Sure.
Jump right in, girl, go.
Go. We've just met today.
Yes.
Um, the superintendent position has been of interest to me for a handful of years. And when you came aboard and the things that I've heard, that you've done as far as interacting with the staff and, uh, just supporting everybody in their endeavors, I've just heard wonderful things. So it's really great to meet you.
Thank you.
And that's about all I can say.
Thank you. Eric?
Um, I would say that it's been incredibly comforting working with you, um, just as far as personally being able to ask you questions. I know this was my first rodeo as a school committee member and I was very fortunate to be able to work with someone who, there wasn't a question silly enough that I could ask you and you would give me information. Um, and then with comfort, sometimes you might not think, but confidence, just knowing we are in such good hands this entire two years. Um, and I'm really excited about the transition and, um, I'm excited for you for being able to go in the direction that you're gonna go. And wherever you end up is going to be so lucky to have you. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I've developed a reputation for crying.
Cry.
So I'm gonna try really hard, but I will certainly, um, so I'm gonna try to, um, summarize quickly just how grateful I am that you came to this district and that you, um, wanted to work here. When I think about your entrance and your interview and the way that you, um, ugh, here I go. The way that you came to a district that needed somebody. Um, we had some, some rough things going on. And that's, I'm gonna unglue the quote entirely, but there's that quote about, "Look for the people who are going towards the problem." Um, and there you were. You came and you weren't afraid to step into the role and you saw the good from the very first day, from your interview, the good in the district. Um, and what has been really amazing is to see all of the beautiful things that have come out of what started as a mess. Um, and what turned into just really, I think, a lot of hope among our staff and educators and parents. Um, I feel very lucky to know you and to, you know, have your cell phone number.
Change your number, Maureen.
Change your number.
And just know you personally. And of course, your work here has just been, um, district-changing. So, um, yeah, really grateful.
Well said. Sam?
Yeah, um, so I, I have loved working with you. It has been wonderful to get to know you better, um, to get to know you at all and then better. Um, one of the things I, I knew, um, when we hired you, I, one of the things I was really hoping to get from an interim superintendent was that we were going to get some, um, outside kind of perspectives on our district. We have a very small district, um, with a lot of really strong personalities and, um, and a lot of families who have been here for a very, very long time. And I think there's a lot of strengths, um, from that. But we really do benefit from having, um, some outside perspective as well. And so, um, I have really loved, like, getting to kind of see East Hampton through your eyes. And, um, I have noticed some things about our, uh, about our city and our schools, like some strengths that I don't think I had fully realized before. Um, and then also some things that we could do better, that I also hadn't fully realized before. Um, and that, um, has been really helpful to me personally, but just as, as a school committee member, also as a parent. Um, to be frank, uh, with my own child and kind of his experience in school, um, it's been really, um, it's, it's just been really refreshing to kind of know that there's somebody there who's kind of seeing it for the first time and, and bringing a lot of different experience. Um, uh, one thing I really appreciated about your leadership was that you were really good at, um, defining kind of the roles, uh, within our district. I think one of the things that we were worried about with somebody coming in as an interim was, um, maybe not being able to have the full strength of our school committee or to really, like, have our own administrators, um, kind of experience, uh, and roles respected. You've been really good about that and you've been, there have been times where we've wanted you to be more active and you've been like, "Nope, that's not my job." And there have been times when we've wanted to do things on the school committee that you were initially, um, not super supportive of, um, or not, like, kinda hoping maybe we wouldn't do them. Um, and, but you were very clear, "This is your decision, it's your community." And so I, um, I appreciate that. I think that's something that, that's like a really good role model for us, but also for our kids, our whole community. It's really important for us to see how to work together, even when we don't agree on every single little thing all the time. Um, and, you know, I really appreciate you staying on for two years. I think that, that really, like, set us up well for a really good intentional transition. I think we all, um, benefited, all of us in our community benefited from the extra time to really think about what we were looking for in a superintendent, what we were looking for from our school district. Um, and you, you took over at a time when we'd just opened a new school, COVID had just, um, had changed everything. We're facing all of these kind of outside pressures on, on municipalities and public education and, um, I couldn't have, I couldn't have imagined it going any better. So, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Um, and, uh, I'm keeping your number.
Yeah.
Well, Maureen. It's been great to work with a woman that's, like, we're women of, of an age.
Boobs, coming in hot, right off the top.
And we, and it, and I feel like you have really, one of the most important things that I feel is important, like, redundant here, but is the ability to listen and then carefully and make decisions. And you have shown that in every aspect of your job, whether that's with staff, with us, with parents, with students. With the first, before I was even on school committee, one of the first comments that somebody said to me was, "She gets in there, she rolls up her sleeves, she does the jobs that need to be done, and you have led by example." And I am so extremely honored that we have a friendship and I, I have learned so much from you and you have so well served. You stepped into a position in a district where we needed you. And you showed up and you did the work and now, good job.
Thank you. Mayor?
Um, yeah, so, one, I'll miss the snack cabinet. There's nothing like me and that with Oreos and Skittles, sweet tart for, for dinner. I appreciate that. Um, and then I, I just remember pretty early on, uh, talking to you about something on the phone and all of a sudden, and I, I wish, I can't get your voice down, but it was something like, "Gotta go." And I'm like, "Superintendent," just kinda hung up on me. And then another great example, a Maureen example, is we had a special, uh, teacher opening.
Yes.
We wanted to fill it, sorry, Maureen. "I'm gonna call Desi and I'm gonna tell her, 'I'm gonna fill until we hire.'" "Did you know, Mayor, I'm a certified sped teacher?" And I was like, "Of course you are." Yeah, so, I mean, just that hands-on approach and, and the fearlessness, it was, it was, it was just what we needed. For the first year, at the second year, kinda kept the boat stable while we all kinda figured out what was next. And, um, and, you know, just really appreciative of, uh, it's been a lot of fun, uh, to work with you, but it's also been really confidence-building, because we've seen some stuff. And here we are.
Thank you.
So thank you.
Thank you.
Can I just say one more thing?
Of course.
I, I don't know that everybody in the community realized what the mayor just said, which is that, um, uh, the superintendent, um, like, taught one of our, um, special education classrooms for the first few weeks of, I think it was, was it the school year last?
This.
This school year. And, um, I was actually, I was at the Mountain View Open House, I was there with Candu and we, I was there early setting up. And, um, I saw Superintendent Vinnie Anna come down the hall with like a rolly cart and I was like, "Oh, that's so cool, like, the superintendent's coming out for the open house night, that's so wonderful." And then I realized you were gonna go to your classroom to meet the teacher, like, the families of the students that you're teaching. And I just think, um, you really, like, have gone above and beyond in pretty much every way. Like, I never would have imagined that, um, you would have a role like that. So thank you.
I think she was the IEP, I think she sometimes advocated for students when they didn't have an advocate. This was something, I actually wanted to mention that. That, that I know that there were students in our district who did not even, who perhaps their parents or guardians could not advocate for them in circumstances, she would go into an IEP and be their advocate.
Mm-hmm. That's a good job. They've covered most of the territory. I have bullet points, I've got two left. Um, one is that Maureen sees everyone. Maureen knows your birthday, Maureen knows your name, Maureen knows about your family and your children. She is personally invested, it is sincere and authentic, and it has transformed the vibes and the morale and the optimism of the district. And there is no dollar figure for that. And, um, I don't know whom else we could have hired at that time, who could have, who could have satisfied that for us. Um, and the second thing that I wanna say about Maureen, my father has this favorite phrase that was, that I will butcher too, because big feelings. But it is something about how the greatest show of a person's character is, you know, that they will make a practice of planting trees whose shade they'll never sit under. And it, Maureen is, Maureen encapsulates that for me. Maureen came here as an interim, initially for just a year, and everything was about how she can make us as strong and robust and successful as possible. That would have had no impact on her personally, really. She could have just come in and plugged it in and phoned it in and, and that was never her approach. That no task too small doesn't go far enough. Um, Maureen is, I'm sure Dr. Volch will attest to this, would, um, chaperone folks, would any task, any little, anything to recognize people and make an event memorable and make it run more smoothly, it just, it didn't go unseen. And I will, I will miss our morning phone calls.
Or you'll keep calling her.
I will keep calling you in the morning. Now, I know you're not coming to my house. "Hi, Lara."
That's pretty good.
My whole family knows, because I always am on speakerphone on my phone, so my entire family will hear me talking and be like, "Jin," and turn around. And my son was deeply touched, um, he was selected for an award that Maureen had of roles and it just, it was incredibly meaningful, because he admires you so deeply. You'll be so missed and nothing, nothing but the best for you moving forward. Thank you. Proud to know you. Thank you. So with that, yes, go!
Sorry, one more thing. I went to a graduation party on Friday evening where, um, a member's granddaughter said that this was her school grandmother. I don't know many people who are, that, you just make such an impact to people. Sorry, I just have to share that.
No?
Yeah.
Eric, you got one.
I'm sorry.
Sorry, we can't stop.
No, I just remember calling you one time, 'cause I had a big question and you would just, I was like, "Could you have a minute?" She's like, "Yeah, just sit in my car." You had picked your car from the shop and you were stopped, you were like, "Well, there's too much traffic, so I'm just answering it." You were just sitting in your car, answering emails and writing to people, like, working again. And I can't also just add, for maybe a lot, public doesn't know, that you would come here from Worcester.
Every day.
And I would, I remember so many meetings where it was eight o'clock, nine o'clock and I'm like, "She's just gonna drive." But it was also, you would never know that it was a stress ever.
You're like, "It's so late."
I'm like, "I'm so tired." And she's, "I have a good night." And you're just like, and I would go home, I remember sitting even with my wife having dinner and thinking like, "Maureen's still driving?" She's driving, so, yeah.
Thank you.
That was actually announced from the microphone at a grad party on Sunday. "Did you know Ms. Benenda came from Worcester?" And people were like, "What?"
So. Thank you. Because of all of this, we would like to take the opportunity tonight to present the certificate of recognition. This certificate is presented to Maureen Benenda in grateful recognition of your outstanding service and unwavering commitment as interim superintendent of the East Hampton Public Schools. The East Hampton School Committee proudly honors you for your leadership, dedication, and care for our students, staff, and community. Your guidance during this transitional period has provided strength, stability, and a renewed spirit of collaboration. With deep appreciation for your contributions to education and your positive impact on East Hampton, we are proud to proclaim June 30th, 2025, as Maureen Benenda Day. That's great! I forgot to get a picture of that guy.
Oh, my God, that's so great. Thank you. That's so great.
There you are.
And the fine chief said he's gonna give me a ride in the truck.
I'll bet. On the last day of school, he said.
That's amazing.
Just like a COVID parade.
Yes, I love it.
As you came in, so you go out, right?
Yeah, yes, yes.
Yep. That's amazing.
Yes, that'll be fun. Oh, can I speak?
Of course.
Okay, so I also wrote a FOL speech out of the school committee, so I'd like to, um, to read it to you. So, "Good evening, Chair Laura Scott, Mayor Nicole LaChapelle, members of the school committee and members of the school community. As I speak to you tonight, I do so with deep gratitude. After two meaningful years as your interim superintendent of schools, I, as you know, will be stepping away from the table. Uh, while transitions are never easy, I leave here with a heart full of appreciation and a strong connection to this community. I want to begin by thanking the school committee for the confidence you placed in me. Your trust and support made this work possible. It has truly been an honor to serve in this role and I've never taken that responsibility lightly. Over these two years, I've had the privilege to work with incredible educators, thoughtful leaders, caring families, and most of all, students, uh, who remind me every day why this work matters. From classrooms to committee meetings, from concerts to community events, I have witnessed here at East Hampton a sheer commitment to learning, growth, and equity. The relationships we've built and the progress we've made together are what I, I will carry with me. I leave feeling not only proud of what we've accomplished, but deeply connected to this district and this community. I also leave with great confidence with the new superintendent, Dr. Michelle Volch, in the continued direction of this district. I believe the foundation is strong and the future is bright. So I want to thank you again for your partnership, your faith in me, and for the opportunity to be part of something truly meaningful. Uh, it is an honor and I wish you all continued success and forward momentum. Thank you."
I love you.
Thank you. Now, you want me to do my?
No, you have to do your updates.
Don't worry.
Okay, so the update is that I really wanted to share, Desi, as you know, is also going through transition now. Uh, they'll be getting, um, a new, um, Commissioner of Education. And so they're working on their educational vision, uh, where are we, where are we gonna start, what do we have, and how are we gonna rebuild it? So there were three things that Desi's gonna focus on. The first is, all students are known and valued. So these are all things that here at East Hampton, we already know and do. Learning experience are relevant, real-world and interactive. And that there are individualized supports that will enable students to excel at every grade level and beyond. So if you think about, you know, what are three basic things that, that, that's all you need, you know, except resources, of course. But one of the three things that we all know, every kid needs and deserves, those are the three things. So that, that educational vision is strong and certainly one that goes with.
I like that they didn't go highfalutin political nonsense. Yes, yeah, yeah. It's still very accessible.
Very succinct.
Very down to, yeah.
Now, the next thing that they talked about is that, you know, that we did the competency determination here, remember, because the MCAS, uh, no longer, um, is a graduation requirement. So these, this, these documents are still, um, posted for comment. Uh, so I'll share with you what is what they propose in. So the class of 2026, uh, remember now, those are, they're trying to think of what you could do with 10th graders. They're only asking for two years of math, two years of English, and one year of science. All right, as the requirements, like, you know, we said, uh, we want our graduation requirements, four years of English. Right? In, in my opinion, these are not the requirements that we want to hold our, our kids up to.
That's just the threshold.
This is the threshold, the minimum? That's the minimum. And then every district, um, well, is able to make more stringent, if that's what you want for graduation. But that is what is being discussed and certainly you can go online and you can, um, enter into conversation about what you think the requirements should be. And I think the new commissioner will have something to say about that too, once he starts in July.
Okay. So, um, when we, I mean, we've already done this work, so there's like, is the, the minimum?
Yes.
But will every school district have to submit what their confidence is gonna be and have that individually approved? Or do we send it to them so it's on file? I'm just curious.
So that's what happened for this class of 2025?
Okay.
And they said it's okay for 2025, so now, I think that's, that's part of the discussion. They do want statewide expectations, which does make sense, um, if they were, you know, a basic statewide.
To replace the MCAS.
Yes, to replace the MCAS requirement. So, um, I, I think that the reason they really wanted is something that's common and so that there's gotta be a basic standard that, that, that's expected. You can't, like, somebody can have, like, hardly any requirements and somebody has more. Well, then, a diploma's meaningless. That's exactly right. So the diploma has to mean something, uh, in order to go forward. So that's, but right now, that's what they're discussing as the minimum requirements.
Chairwoman?
Oh, I'm so sorry, Tim. I was physically turning, so go right ahead.
I hear you. Um, the question I had regarding that was, does that mean, like, say in our district, we decide we want four years of English, for, as an example, and two years is Desi's minimum for graduation? Does that mean that families will have some kind of recourse if they get three and will they graduate in that situation?
So you could have, so there's graduation requirements and competency determination requirements. And the competency determination, um, is usually, like, we said here, that, um, you gotta pass 10th grade English, 10th grade math, um, ninth or 10th grade science, plus you had to meet our graduation requirements.
Can I pause for one second? So Tim wasn't here for the, our, we had a very large discussion. So there's basically two buckets, right?
Yes.
There's our basic graduation requirements, which are, like she had mentioned, the four years of English, et cetera, et cetera. Then there was also the pass, passing the MCAS, which has a math component, an ELA component, and a science component. So when that MCAS was removed as a requirement to graduate, the state is now grappling with, what are we setting as a minimum standard?
Sure, sure.
To achieve that competency. So it's kind of like two separate baskets at this point, which may change, this may diverge as Desi.
Right.
The only question that I had was regarding the one basket that has just, we wanna keep four years.
Four years of English.
My question was, will families have a recourse to, um, reach out to Desi or, because they want their child to graduate and they've got three, uh, years of, of English? And they've passed three, and if Desi's minimum is two and ours is four?
But if what they're trying to achieve is an East Hampton High School diploma?
Yeah.
And those requirements are published beginning first year of your four years? And then the real, what the recourse actually is, is how can we aid this student and support this student to get that last, if it's the fourth year of English, if it's the third year of science, et cetera, et cetera? It goes into hot water, that's great. Yeah, go ahead, Tim.
So, I have a question in the, in the scenario where somebody moves from a different district with different graduation requirements. Um, but, how does that work?
So, that is a good question.
TBD.
TBD.
That's, was that, I think that's why they want it to be?
It has to be a conversation upfront as you're coming in, like, where are you at? And, and Bill Evans and his guidance department are really adept at this, is kind of sitting students down from the jump and then checking in yearly to say, here's your grad track?
Sure.
Here's what you're missing, you know? So, it is an ongoing.
So that's a good thing to?
Yeah.
Ask Desi, though.
Yeah. So, for example, um, here in East Hampton, you require four years of social studies.
Yeah.
Now, nobody requires, most likely, four years.
Yeah.
It's three. But you have to take four years to get a high school diploma here of social studies. So, that is, that's in the, that's in the, in the write-up here. So, it's four years of English, four years of social studies, three years of lab science.
Oh, I get it, okay.
Right, right? So here, you have an extra course.
Just like a college, right?
Right, right. No, but, I mean, I understand that, that, when you said if they want a, um, diploma from here?
Right.
That's the standard, and there's no, even whatever Desi's standard is, standard is, you cleared it, and you set your own. So, that's our standard, regardless of what Desi's.
Because the Desi standard isn't set for students. The Desi standard is set for districts, meaning you can't just hand these out like participation award, here's the minimum that you have to require. It's meant to hold districts accountable, not students.
Yeah.
It's the district's job.
Oh, yeah, right, yeah.
And graduation requirements, uh, actually filed into the, into the school committee.
The school committee.
Right. I don't know if this is what Tim was, um, is what you're, like, along the same lines, but I'm thinking about, like, that smaller parent who, like, their kid meets the state minimum but doesn't meet East Hampton. Like, are they gonna go complain? And, right, is that kind of what you're saying?
Absolutely.
I mean, yeah. There's conversations, and we do have those challenges.
Yeah, we do have them.
There are fam, there are families who've moved here mid-grad, mid-high school, and yeah, there's, there's summer school options, there's double, like, these are conversations that happen on the first time they approach East Hampton High Administration and throughout their tenure at East Hampton High.
Yeah.
And sometimes, like, they're allowed to walk with the class, but they're still taking stuff over that, like, they will work with them.
The funny, the funny thing is that, in my head, I was like, well, that's gonna be, you know, something for the administration to, to, to structure and to set.
Sure.
And then I was like, well, that's, I forgot we were on the school board.
Somebody, somebody's gonna need to look into. Yeah, that's us. Yeah, that's us, Tim.
Yeah. I, I just don't, I don't see this, though, much different than, we could have had a student that passed the MCAS?
Right.
But then did not complete those graduations.
That's right.
This is, this is, this is what's fitting in for the MCAS. We could have currently had a student that passed the MCAS, but they didn't have their four years of, it's not, whatever. So that's exactly the scenario you're describing.
No, yeah, well, I don't, I don't understand, like.
Because our grad requirements were always what they were.
When we had the two buckets, if they didn't get both buckets, then they didn't graduate.
Right.
And we're going down to one bucket?
No. They're trying to figure out how to replace.
MCAS.
Yes.
MCAS bucket.
But all those other grad requirements have all, have been consistent. And so, we've, we already have a process in place, or have been dealing with kids transferring in and, and facing those somewhat different grad requirements that can change district to district. They also, like, out of state, it just, like, it is a challenge.
Sure. Was Linda saying that, um, one, if, if you get one and not the other, basically, you still don't, you don't graduate? Because you have to have them both.
But I think what she was also saying is the grad requirement isn't new. Like, the MCAS conversation is a new thing for us. The grad requirements are not.
Right.
Like, the high school is already prepared to have those.
Right, right, right.
I think one, one other thing is, previously, you could potentially have passed all of your classes. I think this was very rare, but it did happen where somebody would pass all of their classes that were required for graduation and not pass the MCAS.
Right.
And then those students would not be able to graduate, because they had to pass the MCAS to graduate. Now, with the MCAS gone, the, uh, competency determination that Desi has set out is much lower than our, they're, they're basically saying you need to have two years of English, two years of math, whatever, and we're, our graduation requirements already.
That's not their competency requirement.
That's their graduation.
Okay, so that's their graduation requirement, but they don't have a competency requirement?
Yet. And the competency will, will probably adjust a little bit by grad here, because some of our current high school kids did take the MCAS.
Yeah, yeah. I, I'm, the, the thing is, I just don't want my point to get lost in the weeds of, of talking about all these other, uh, requirements. My point was basically that if, if there's a difference, and I, I guess we figured, I figured it out, that, that if there was a difference between Desi's standard and our standard, are we gonna, is there gonna be a problem? If, if a family gets them to pass the Desi standard but not our standard, is there gonna be a problem? Do they have any recourse to go?
To date, we haven't had, it's an issue that should have presented itself by now, if we're going to, and hasn't, but who knows what the future holds?
Okay.
Right?
I think, so these are actually the competency requirements to pass, plus see your graduation requirement. So in order to graduate, right now, the, we, we said one year, you have to pass 10th grade English.
Right.
10th grade math, and not, nine, some people have, you know, ninth or 10th grade science. Now they're saying you have to pass two years of math, so you'd have to pass ninth and 10th grade, plus you have to pass ninth and 10th grade English, plus one year of science. So they're putting, makes competency, and then your graduation requirement. But it's, it's to graduate.
Yeah.
You have to have passed two years of math, two years of English, one year of science, plus your graduation, like.
As far as Desi's concerned, right? As far as we're concerned.
Competency, not graduation, to replace the MCAS.
Two different.
That's what they're proposing.
Yes.
There's one.
There's one.
And it will change, and that's just for the class of 26.
Yeah, but I mean, the, Ms. Pinyando was saying that, and to graduate, they needed to pass the, the Desi standard. And, and any, wherever, wherever, whatever schools are at.
Yeah.
What, you can use the Desi standard. If we use the Desi standard?
For competency or for grad requirement?
For, for graduation requirement. So, if we use the, the Desi, uh, standard, then we're fine. But if we moved, uh, I'm saying if we moved ahead of the Desi, the Desi standard, if a student doesn't graduate as far as East Hampton's concerned, the only question I had is, do they have any, is it gonna be a problem because the Desi standard is lower?
My guess is that the competes, competent stand, standard that we're talking about right now that Desi is putting out must be covered by any high school's graduation requirements?
Yes.
And if those specific competency requirements aren't within that school, like our school, then it's a no-go. It doesn't meet the, um, the requirement for value of Massachusetts High School diploma.
Yeah, we, we, I, I think we got there, like, five, seven minutes ago.
Yeah. I mean, I, I hear what you're saying, though. They couldn't just pass the MCAS and then say, hey, hand me my diploma because I get the competency.
Right.
They still can't do the same thing. Hey, I showed my two years of passing, you know, ninth and 10th grade math, you know, my two years of this, and then say, hey, hand me a diploma.
Mm-hmm.
And that's the, that's what I'm saying, they still have to meet our standards for graduating.
Right, 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 and I guess that's.
That's, that's.
I think, I think I understand your question, and I think the answer is yes, they're, like, they could go complain.
Yes.
We haven't had it happen before.
Right.
If it does happen, I think the district would probably be the, like, winning side of that, not that there's winners of.
Right. What we're trying to do is.
It, it has to be.
In a, yes.
It has to be in words, you know, and I'm sure it is in words, because.
Yes.
And then they'll just refer to that and use that to.
Yes.
Make sure that you're protected, I just want to.
Yeah, exactly. But we won't, like, get in trouble for holding a higher standard.
Sure.
They could just go ahead and, like. So tonight, what we're being asked to do is to approve that competency standard for the class of 26?
No, just that you're aware of.
Just that we're aware of it.
Propose.
Okay.
It's just proposed. So the competency standard is this, the graduation requirements you set. And this is the competency the state sets.
Okay.
So, the state sets, and then you're set for, uh, to graduate from here. Because you have the common core, too, right? So you want to make sure that you're always trying to get to where that common core is, which is how many, you know, four years of phys ed, or two credits in full phys ed, depending upon how, how.
And this is just for 26, so this could be adjusted as we move forward.
Yes.
Okay, too confusing.
All right.
I think we've given enough air.
So this is, so this is.
Your competency again.
Mayor has a question.
Mayor? Um, I think that it's very careful that we all keep track of, of this conversation, because, not that it's all about money, but it is.
Mm-hmm.
So, the billions of dollars that Massachusetts had spent on the MCAS, where are those billions of dollars?
Great question.
Now that MCAS is no longer in place?
Mm-hmm.
So that's one. MCAS dollars, as I understand it, are captured by Chapter 70. So let's remember fair share money is considered one time, and it, it should not be considered as a part of our Chapter 70 money. So again, to go back, billions of dollars on MCAS, now no MCAS, in Chapter 70, where does that money go? Because the, the general thought is, fair share is wonderful, but the legislature isn't tied to the intent, right?
Valid. It's like our pot money, right? It fluct, it can fluctuate.
It fluctuates, but, but also, there's nothing to say that the legislator, legislature will say, here's Chapter 70, and we're only gonna fund it at 30%. Because we know you're getting something equal to 30% out of fair share.
Right.
So, that, that's, and Chapter 70 is general ed. And a lot of general ed money that's in our budget cannot be used for special ed, which is Chapter 71.
Right.
I mean, it's, but, like, I would think that the Massachusetts Association of School Committees, Massachusetts Association of, um, Superintendents, um, advocates out of the Special Ed.
Yeah.
Committee will keep that, but that's, that's really important.
Yeah.
So, like.
Finance, we should fair share.
See, finance could go to, um. But what's the gut on Chapter 70?
Yeah.
Where, where's that money go?
Right. Sam, did you have?
Uh, no.
Okay. Well, then we're gonna pass.
We're gonna pass.
So, so some of the money is still gonna be used on MCAS, because we still have to give it.
Right.
Uh, you have to give it, because that's the accountability of every district that's gonna be counted on. And you're exactly right, the accountability is then tied to, to extra funding, if you can get extra funding for grants or whatever, based on your performance on, on MCAS. So, I mean, you only can apply for certain grants if you have, like, a low performance on something, you have, there's opportunities that the state gives you. That doesn't mean you want a score low so that you can get more money. But it, it is connected, and so the MCAS is still being given, and, and it is gonna be the accountability for the district, based on how kids perform on it.
Is that a state decision?
Yes, it's not a federal decision, it's a state decision.
Because every.
Because the valid initiative was just about the graduation requirement.
That's right.
Yeah.
And then, and to the chair, one other thing, too, is that, uh, in order, well, who knows what federal grants are, are coming, but the rule on that is that, um, every state has to give a state test that shows performance, the same test to everybody.
Right.
Or you're not eligible to apply for certain federal grants.
Right, right.
And so, the MCAS was already here, so that's the test they're keeping.
So, so the MCAS is still, it's still as relevant as it was.
Evaluated for district, not a student, right? So it's evaluated.
So it's not a graduation barrier any longer, but it still exists, and it's still as important as it was.
Our teachers are able to teach these kids what they need to know by certain bits.
So are they gonna still teach to the test?
Well, not in this district. For better or worse, that is a, that is a, that's a principal decision that was made in this district.
Yeah. Okay, thanks.
Yeah. Um, are we, I have flaps, but are we okay with this conversation? Do we need to carry it any further?
This is proposed, we can wait and.
You can go.
Oh, for sure, yeah.
Go in line on the Desi side, and there's public comment.
Yeah. The competency requirement seems reasonable.
Competency requirement.
Um, this ties into one other brief announcement that we can make. Um, we had mentioned to the public that we were, um, named as, um, litigants in a lawsuit against the federal government in an effort to protect the Department of Education. Uh, the most recent update that we received today is that, um, the, the back of the napkin is that we were successful with the first judge. It was then sent to the Court of Appeals, who supported the initial judge, um, the initial judge's opinion. So we've basically gone two rounds, and they have sided with our side both times. Uh, the current administration at the federal level has now, as of today, um, filed with the Supreme Court and asked them to consider to reverse the prior two decisions. Um, our legal side will be preparing a response, which is due, I believe, by the end of the week. Um, so clear your schedule for Thursday, tomorrow. So, that, that is what we know thus far. Whether, we do not know whether the Supreme Court will choose to take it up or not, we just know that we have to submit a response to their request, and that is where that lawsuit is at today. Um, oh, yes. Want me to do one more?
Of course. So, you know, sometimes people talk about, uh, like, student demographics, like, why do we have so many students with disabilities? Like, people ask that question, like, all the time. We're a small community. So, um, Desi actually did a, a chart, which I issued to the school committee, which is 2015 to 2025, 2020, to 2025, what has the changes been across Massachusetts? All right? So, that, therefore, you're not just thinking about yourself, but across Massachusetts. And students with disabilities, in 2015, um, it was 17.1%. And in, um, 2000, now, it is, uh, percentage change increase is 20.5. So, and we are right in that, right around that number. So, I, I just thought it was somewhat comforting, because we were saying, like, why we, why are all these children having to get disabilities?
I think you read that wrong.
Oh, did I read it wrong?
So it went from 17.1 to 20.6, a percentage change of 3.5.
Oh, 3.5, from 15 to 25, that was 20.5.
Yeah.
Yep. So that's from 2015.
But that's statewide, so we're in line with statewide, as far as you're saying.
Exactly what I'm saying, the percentage, the percentage change from 2015 to 2025.
Statewide.
We're not in the outlier.
Percentage change is 20.5%.
We're still well above that, uh, we're still well above that percentage.
We're well above the percentage, but the increase is the same.
Yes. Now, low income, in 2015, the state was 26.3, right? And the change from.
Forty something?
Fifty to 25 is, which was, um, that's interesting, is 15.8, right? Number of change, and then that's a 60% increase across the state on low income.
So we're at something like 40%, 40-plus percent, aren't we?
Yeah, we're, we're up there, yeah.
But that's still a lot, that's a lot, that's a huge increase of low income from 2015 to 2025.
Can I get a copy? Can I just scan it with my?
No, I put it, I gave it to you with the new check.
Oh, that's right.
Now, English learners, uh, we have had an increase in English learners here, but I'm not compared to what's happened.
It's a wave.
Yeah. So, 8.5% was in 2015, right? And then the change from, the number change from 2015 to 2020 was 2.3. And from 20 to 2025, 3.1, 50 to 25, 5.4, but that's a 63.5% increase in the state. But that's a sixty, three point five percent increase in the state. That's a, that's a lot.
It's a lot.
And then high needs, which is students with disabilities, low income and English learners together, right? Was, that was forty two point two in 2015, and I'll just switch to tell you from fifteen now to twenty five, it's thirteen point six. So the total increase is thirty two point two percent.
So that means that over, over half of the students in the state are considered high needs.
Just about.
Yeah.
Yep.
Which would mean they're in one of three categories.
Right.
Low income, English learners, or students with disabilities.
At least one of the three.
Right. Okay, and the next one was, um, on enrollment on race and ethnicity. And, uh, there's very low, um, increase in American Indian or Alaska Native, right? Um, across the state, there's a nineteen percent increase in Asian. There is a seventeen point two percent in Black or Afro Americans. Hispanic is a forty four point seven percent increase from 2015 to twenty twenty five. Multi-race that are not Hispanic or Latino is forty eight point four percent.
Jeez.
And then, um, no, no difference in Native Hawaiian, but there's a decrease of nineteen point two percent for white students across the state. So we're looking at-
As a percentage of the whole.
As a percentage of the whole.
Yeah.
So we're, we're looking at statewide, a different, a different demographics, right?
Yeah, changing demographics.
In Massachusetts than, um, what we've had before. So I just thought that was just interesting, like some of those are extreme changes, right? Um, and then students with disabilities, probably because more kids are being identified as, right? We're, we're doing a much better job of screening kids like dyslexia. We are now, example, we're screening kids, right, in kindergarten, and then we're screening them three times, right? So that we're now going to identify more kids that have dyslexia. That was certainly something that we, we never, um, everywhere, we, we didn't catch on to dyslexia until sometimes kids were in the third grade. And so now we're catching on to kids that have that. So I just thought that the demographic changes-
Yeah.
Were very interesting. So what we could do, um, also after the October first report, we could compare when our changes have been here.
Yeah.
Since 2015 to twenty five, right, versus this, this state.
Sure. I think it's a great idea. Really interesting.
Of course.
Any questions?
No, I just want to say, I think it's of the utmost importance really to compare our district to-
Yes.
The whole state.
Yeah. We won't have that data till fall, but then we dig in.
Yeah. I think it'd be a great safe time, check and see the changing demographics in the city.
That's, that's the end of my report. Great, thank you so much. We are going to move on to our business update of our Director of Business Services, Julie Starry-Franks.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Um, in your packet should be a copy of the, um, Business Manager's Report. Uh, the first item on the report is the Local Appropriation Report. So at this time, ninety five percent of our FY25 budget is either expended or encumbered. Um, not going to lie, it feels a little tight. Um, keep in mind though that that does not include the budget offsets that are planned in the FY25 budget. So the expenses that are, were already planned to be charged to School Choice and to Circuit Breaker, those transfers don't happen until we close up the books at the end of the year, right? So at some point, that number will shift to one oh two, one oh three, one oh four. Um, but it will, we're, we're hoping that all the numbers will settle out, uh, as we close out the books for the year. Um, second item on, uh, the report is the Supplemental Appropriation, right? As you're aware, we've been aware of a budget deficit for this year. We've been working very closely with the mayor, with the Auditor's Office to address, uh, that deficit, uh, which includes tapping into additional resources that we have at our disposal such as School Choice and Circuit Breaker. But we're also seeking an additional appropriation from, uh, the city to address that shortfall in our budget. Um, so we've requested three hundred thousand dollars as a supplemental appropriation from the city. The City Council will be voting on that appropriation on the eighteenth. So, um, assuming that that goes, uh, well and the vote goes in our favor, right? We will be able to use those funds to, uh, close out the budget deficit. Uh, the third item on the report is year-end transfers. Um, typically throughout the year, if we're going to transfer a large amount of money, so over five thousand dollars between cost centers, I come to you, um, with an outline of what led to the issue, right? Why we're transferring the money, where the money is coming from, where it's going to. Um, uh, but from May through the end of the year, I don't do that because we're shifting our own funds to sort of close out and zero, um, line items. So as an informational purpose, uh, we will be working on that, um, between now and whenever we officially close out the books with the city. Uh, fourth item is the Summer Food Program. Uh, we're excited that we are going to be offering the Summer Food Program again this summer. Um, we are going to be expanding the site and adding the high school as a site this year.
Smaller, excellent.
So, uh, our Food Service Director Ken, um, is excited to sort of see how that works. So this will be kind of a pilot year for us.
Yep.
Uh, we also have the ability to flex that program if we have larger participation than planned. The current plan right now is to produce all of the meals at Mountain View and then bring meals as sort of needed, um, to the high school. And if it turns out there's greater demand, we can always apply to the state to change the status of that location and to, um, increase production and have a site at, at the high school. Um, NEARI had been part of our application. Um, they're no longer going to be doing, um, their food service sort of reporting and programmatic pieces with us. They're going to be operating their own food, food service and doing their own programming from now on. Um, next item on here is custodial charges related to building use. Um, in your packet is a copy of Policy KGE, which is our Facilities Use or Building Rental policy. Um, it's come to our attention that the amount outlined in that policy that we are charging for custodial overtime, due to that contract negotiation and where we anticipate those rates are going to be over the next two years, that rate is no longer sufficient to cover the costs depending on which of our staff meet. Um, so I'm requesting that the committee refer that issue to the Policy Subcommittee to be reviewed so that we can update that policy so that we're not losing money, um, on some of those engagements when people are renting our facilities.
Can I interject Julie?
So-
Yes. Will you be, be the request, and I understand the request is sent into Policy. Is Policy going to have some notes about what the suggested increase is?
I'll be happy to meet with you.
Yep. Great.
Yep. Absolutely. Uh, and the last item on my report is the Personnel Report for the month of May. Uh, and that is there for your reference. Are there any questions from the committee?
Um, does anyone, I think that the, I think that the Finance and Personnel Reports are fine. I think we do, well, I expect Policy will need some guidance on how-
Oh, absolutely.
Adjust those rates and so we've taken care of that. So the last thing that I'm just wondering if anyone has questions about is the supplemental appropriation, particularly for Tim who's just joining us for tonight. FY, 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 right? It gets real confusing. So we are, we do have a budget proposal, but we're all a little, our budget season is running a little late this year. There's a lot going on. So we are now at the point where it's simultaneously shepherding our budget request through for the upcoming school year to begin September one, but additionally buttoning up this deficit where I think, were we at one point one was our total deficit for this school year that we're currently sitting in, for the fiscal year that applies to that. So, um, this supplemental appropriation is we are going, we are taking even additional funding from our two kind of revolving accounts. So Circuit Breaker is money that we get back from special education. It's reimbursement for special education services that we provide. And then School Choice is, you can probably put together yourself, that money that we get for kids that are choicing in. Um, so we had balances in both of those, two fifty roughly in Circuit Breaker and six and a quarter in School Choice. So we are pulling another three fifty, Julia?
Mm-hmm.
Out of those accounts to pull us down to about, what would the total?
Be like five.
So in addition-
I was a history major.
Me too. So in addition to the amounts that were already planned as offsets to this year's budget, we are planning and using an additional two hundred and thirty five thousand dollars from Circuit Breaker, an additional six hundred and sixteen thousand from School Choice. Um, we freed up a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in our line item for vocational tuition because we had fewer students enrolled and complete and stay in those programs all year than we had budgeted for when we developed that budget, right, in January of two, of twenty twenty four. And then we anticipate that there will be about fifty thousand dollars in savings within other line items in our budget for this year, right? We closed our purchasing in our budget a little earlier than we normally would have by about three weeks, um, right? To sort of save every penny, shake every couch cushion, right, to identify funds to help close that gap.
So the sheet that we have that says revolving fund balances, that has the balance available for budget deficit for Circuit Breaker at two forty eight, you're saying we're pulling an additional two thirty five from that two forty eight?
Yes.
And then for the School Choice, the balance of six twenty eight, we're pulling an additional six sixteen?
Yes. Right, so that means there will be very little left in those.
In addition to that, to just pay the bills, we need three hundred thousand dollars from the city.
Yes.
So that is reflected in the supplemental appropriation.
Correct.
Megan, Finance, do you have questions?
Yeah, I do have questions. So I'm a little, um, worried. I'm wondering how, like, if you can weigh in about your level of worry. It looks like we're going to have, like, less than twenty thousand left in Circuit Breaker and less than, like, fifteen thousand or twenty thousand left in School Choice revolving. Legally, we can't even do, like, we, we're not prepared for next year.
We will be, based on our estimates of next year's revenue, right? This, again, this is a reason why we don't do those transfers-
Right.
To clean up the budget until the end of the year. Because School Choice revenue, we get on a monthly basis as part of the local aid payment. So we track that revenue as it's coming in. So I've looked at historically what our revenue's been the past couple of years, right? So we're fairly comfortable that we'll be able to bring in enough revenue to match the offsets that are planned already in next year's budget using those funding sources.
Unless we get, like, this year, it's increased, we didn't expect in whatever, and then we don't, we, we have nothing left in our reserves to-
Correct.
Yeah, so we were forced to-
So one, and just for the public, this stuff is very confusing. So for the public, the way this historically was handled in this district is there would be kind of a cash of money, whatever they could save, they would, because it will be, for example, a special education student may transfer into the district or receive, um, a diagnosis of some sort that requires services that cost money mid-year, for example. And so there would be money available to, to basically not have to go back to the city mid-year for an appropriation request that we could handle it in-house. So where this shift might potentially happen, if that were to arise, is that it may require us to do what we haven't done historically, which is go to the City Council and the mayor to say, we're going to need some additional funding on top of our, you know, this year's budget request, we're going to need more for this unexpected. And Tim, you had your hand up.
I did, I just wanted to, can I, can, I know you're probably extremely busy, but at some point, I would love to come to your office and meet with you so you can get me more caught up on the language and more-
Absolutely, my door is always open to any of you.
Fantastic.
And we also could invite you to, um, you would be placed on Policy, but we would also invite you to attend Finance and we can help kind of get you up to speed with our budget net order because we just wrapped up that process so we can help get you. Grab a coffee and just talk Finance, it's so fun.
Really fun.
No, it's, you know, it's always fun.
We do enjoy it, that's what I'm saying.
I like it.
You guys do enjoy it.
Does anybody else have any questions?
It has a really big impact as well.
It sure does, yeah.
It's something you can learn.
Just for the record, I'm a little concerned about the way that we've had to, um, request less from the city and the way that we've had drained, that we've, we've had to drain, I was about to say that. Because we aren't, like, if someone moves in, um, mid-year next year, we really have to be careful. We can't, we are, we're a small enough district that we can't go to City Council and say, we've had a person move in-
Right.
And now we need this amount of money to send them somewhere.
We have to be very careful because it-
It would reveal identity, like, we just, it is in our interest in a city and our district to keep money in our Circuit Breaker and our School Choice revolving funds to account for, like, these emergency things. I just, that is-
Just specifically special ed for that reason.
Specifically special ed, increase in homeless transportation. I mean, we could have anticipated increase from one homeless student to seven homeless students in the district. So, yeah, it just-
No, I, I agree, and I think this is an important conversation moving forward next year as we think about developing the FY27 budget. Um, in, in some communities, in their special education, um, sort of projections, there are some communities that plan for, you know, two unanticipated residential placements, two unanticipated, you know, vocational placements.
Yeah.
Um, so sometimes everybody knows that that's what they're doing and everybody's fine with it. Other communities, if you try to do that, they say you're padding your budget, right? So we need to make sure that whatever strategy we come up with, that we're clear and transparent with it, uh, with the city. Um, there's also the possibility of creating a reserve line in our budget. Um, in other communities, they have basically like a contingency fund. They have a line item that they choose to have as a contingency fund, whether it's for legal settlements, whether it's for contract negotiations.
Cannot be rolled over fiscal year to fiscal year.
Right, but we could plan it as part of our budget, what we, our initial ask, right? Um, and there's been some conversations with the city about how they're handling some of those one-time funds that come in, like when there's changes to the Chapter Seventy calculation between when the initial budget comes out and when it ends, right? So there, there's conversation on the city's side about how we create either, whether it's a reserve fund, a stabilization fund. I mean, that they're aware of the challenges that we're facing.
Yeah.
Right, and I think we're all looking at this and feeling a little nervous, but if it, if it makes you feel any better, I have been able to sleep at night.
Okay, good, that's going to feel better.
Because of-
I would just like to broadcast to the public, they may see us act in ways and request things that we have not historically. And it's not that it's a, a lack of responsibility, it's just that we are in a transformative period in how we're trying to handle both city budgets and school budgets and how those two things communicate with each other in really difficult financial and uncertain financial times.
Correct.
Yep. Thank you, that's really helpful. I look forward to next year figuring out that.
It, it may have more to do with melatonin that I can sleep at night, but, right?
I trust you, I just wanted to make sure that-
Oh, absolutely, yeah. It's a departure from how we've typically done things, Sam.
I, I also just, whenever this comes up, I feel like it's really important to just remind, like, the public and, and anybody who's listening, like, there are some, um, if you have a student who needs a lot of special education services, like, it is not your fault-
No, no.
That we are running a budget, uh, short, shortage this year, like-
We are only nervous because we want to make sure we have the money to get that education.
Like, your kid deserves an education and, um, we want, we want them to get that education. So like, we're, we're doing it, um, for, for you and for your kid, and it's better for our community when all of our kids are getting what they need.
It's our job to find the money.
Yes.
Yeah, preach and make sure that we don't-
And thank you so much for, um, doing that and also, um, I'm glad to hear that you're sleeping at night. That does make you feel better. I tend to take my cue from, from you, so.
Okay, so hold on one second. So, Sam, do you have a policy meeting scheduled?
I do not, but I-
Okay, then I'm not going to worry about it right now.
I'm gonna, um-
CC, Julia, when you schedule a meeting?
Yes, and do we have to do anything to get Tim onto the committee?
No.
Okay, cool.
I say, Tim, you're officially on-
You're on policy.
Subcommittee. The member that you were proposing, Ben Hershey, was on policy. There you go. Policy.
So we'll come up with a time that the four of us, five of us can, uh, can meet.
Okay.
So, yeah.
Great. Uh, Megan?
Sorry. Um, the summer meal thing, thank you, that's amazing news. I'm so happy that we're going to have summer meals again. Do we have a plan in place for advertising the heck out of this and, I know, sorry. Uh, so there are some remaining funds from the Project Bread Grant from FY23 and FY24.
Can you state to? That all this, all the school lunch and food fund, this is a separate bucket of funds. We can't spend this on other things, we can't pay teacher salaries, we're not blowing money on this.
Right, right, so it's, it's a separate program run through DESI as part of a federal program. It's adjunct to the National School Lunch Program, you have to opt into it, right? Which is why I said we're happy to be running this program again because it's optional, right? National School Lunch Program, you have to participate in. Summer Feeding, you don't have to, right? As a community, we have opted into for the past couple of years. What was your initial question? I'm sorry, it was my fault.
It's, it's one of two questions. One is, like, do we-
Oh, planned advertising.
Yeah.
Yes, so, um, once our application is approved, so DESI has to give it the final stamp of approval. There's a lot of documents and things that we have to upload. Once we have that stamp of approval, um, I know Ken has already been in, uh, conversations with the Hampshire Gazette and some others to put out advertising and using, um, so the Project Bread Grant, right, was put in place and one of the purposes of that grant is to advertise and promote your program. So yes, there are plans in place to do that.
And sort of my follow-up to that is, um, and actually I've had this, this question come up a couple of times as, through the year in the, um, amazing, uh, Weekend Food Program that we have. I've heard people, um, asking, like, if I have enough money, right, to pay my bill, it's not like, am I still allowed to go get a meal? Like, is it only for a certain type of person or can anybody go?
Um, any school-aged child can go to the summer feeding sites. Um, the big thing is there's still no grab and go, right? So they're congregant sites, so they have to eat the meals at the site, but any school-aged child can show up- Um, and eat meals at, uh, Mountain View and at the high school this summer.
I just wanted that reiterated for the community that is not taking advantage of a program. It is not. What, like, we want as many folks as possible, regardless of your income level, to come on over to MBS and grab some lunch and get there and then go play on the playground and hang out a little bit and then go home and you don't have to have any minimum income level or need or anything. It's for everybody to have a place to go and have lunch with your friends and gather and-
And breakfast.
And breakfast.
And breakfast, yes.
Amazing, you go twice a day, yes.
Um, I, I would just ask that there are flyers at the East Hampton Community Center, Convitational Church, Veterans Coalition-
Library.
And the other-
ECOA, you have caregivers there.
And if you are planning meetups for your kids, consider them around lunch.
Right.
Breakfast, right. Can you just list off those places again so I can communicate that to Ken?
East Hampton Community Center, Convitational Church, Wellness Coalition.
ECOA. ECOA and the library. You know what, Julia, and I can send you, we should have just like a little list, a working list that we, that are just our community touchpoints, um, and we should give it to all department heads.
Yeah, that would be good.
And on the website, yeah. So I will communicate those to Ken and, uh, make sure that we get some materials out.
Excellent. Um, I, and we'll entertain a motion to move, um, the KGE policy regarding the community use of facilities to the Policy Subcommittee.
So moved.
Uh, can I get a second?
Second.
Sam, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries, thank you so much. Uh, thank you so much, I appreciate it. I think we're done, yes?
Thank you.
Cool, so next, a, moving right on to a Policy Subcommittee update, how's finally? Sam, do you have an update?
Uh, we're going to be meeting soon.
And you're going to be discussing?
And we're going to be discussing-
Community use policy.
Yeah, the community use policy, and we're also going to be continuing, um, the AI discussion too, so.
All right, well, have a good time. Uh, Finance Subcommittee update?
We don't have any update.
Yep, we are just waiting and watching for that budget to move through.
Yes, correct.
Um, the dates for, so the appropriation request, I've lost track now.
Eighteenth.
The eighteenth, excellent, and that's the full council hearsay. FinCom will have it before then, okay, great. And then Mayor, do we know, is the, is the budget hearing set yet for the City Council, their public hearing? Oh, they're doing both on the eighteenth? Oh, that'll be a long hiding.
So I'll just say that the budget hearing was set, um, and happened, and I, uh, presumably, I'm not sure where the final, I mean, it'll be, I'm not worried about the budget happening, but appropriations right now are scheduled for the eighteenth. I don't know when the FinCom meeting is for, and I would, I would encourage the Finance Committee, the City Council Finance Committee meeting, um, it's important to go to all and any meetings, but that's kind of the intense conversation-
Yeah.
Around appropriations.
That's where the work is done.
Yeah, and, and so it's hybrid, it's in-person, it, um, yeah, I don't know what the-
We will certainly know much more on June eighteenth, everyone. Pop your popcorn and tune into that meeting. Um, CES update?
Yeah, speaking of, uh, uh, budget hearings, uh, the CES budget hearing was, was at the, the last meeting that I went to. And I have to say, I know that I've been, um, a little bit concerned, I would say, I'm, I'm still concerned about kind of the financial health of the, of the agency, of the organization. Um, but there is a, uh, a budget, um, that has been proposed for next year that does drain a lot of the, a lot of the reserves at CES, but it will continue to, it will be able to run basically at the same, there are a couple
After they've made those cuts.
After they've made those cuts, yeah. So, so just so that you're aware, Tim and anybody else who's watching, I always like imagine there's people tuning in for the first time, and I'm always
They might pick it up later.
Yeah, so CES is the Collaborative for Educational Services. It's the collaborative that we are a member of. This is a, like, a nonprofit organization that a bunch of school, different school districts join as board members essentially, and then we use the collaborative to provide services that might be hard for us to provide in small districts. So it's us and I, it's something like 36 districts, because it's a bunch of regional districts, and then the town districts, and getting a quorum in this meeting is very, very difficult. But, yeah, so I, you know, it's been a challenging year fiscally. We're ending in a better place. I'm feeling better about just kind of the, it seems like they've really kind of got a handle, a bit more of a handle on kind of how to steer the ship for a little while. I had a really, I had a good conversation with Todd Gasta, who's the, the, he's not, it's not a superintendent, if it's a CES, he's the, he's the guy in charge. Director, there you go, executive director. And I've had some good conversations with other board members and some, some staff that I know as well. And it's a really cool organization, and they do a lot of stuff other than working for our public school districts. They have all of the DYS teacher contracts in the state, and they have all of the special education and institutional settings as well. So, and they do all of the community and family, the early childhood stuff for, you know, our East Hampton Family Center and other, other things in the community. So they're a really cool organization, they're a large sprawling organization that I think can be really hard to, especially in times like this where all your grant, they rely a lot on grants and grant fundings and school districts, and everything has just gone up in price, school districts are feeling it. And we start, we start pulling back on these services when we can and if we have to, and then they feel it, and there's a ripple effect, so. But I do feel better than I did last time. I am looking forward to the approving the budget next week, so.
We're going to end on that note.
Two weeks, in two weeks, if we can get a quorum at that June 25th meeting, we'll, we'll be done, so.
Great.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Skirt on by.
Going to move to action items?
Can I give a playground update, or do you want me to do that?
No, that would be great, yes.
No, you won't me to?
Yes, I would like for you, correct. I would like for you to give a playground update before we move on to action items.
The playground update is that we, the survey went out, 200, and I think it went up to 225 students filled out the survey, which is an amazing response rate, I was pretty excited by that. And we brought results to the ELF showcase and the art night over at Mountain View last week, both of which were incredible events going on, and there was ice cream, and it was a good time. It was, there was a highlight, there was ice cream. And a ton of people came by and kids talked to us, and they recognized like where their, like, one of their quotes that we had pulled out, it was really
So ELF and their board of directors got to be first-hand, ELF who gives, ELF got to see the work that you're doing.
Learning Foundation, yes.
East Hampton Learning Foundation, yes. And we have great support from the PTO, which I'm looking over at Tim because it happens to be his partner who is a great support and was at a stakeholders meeting that we had on Monday, J, excuse me, that's just yesterday. We had a great meeting with municipal employees and our city planner, and just, we're all on the same page. We have our action steps. We've got some great organizations like ELF and the Community Preservation Act Committee and the PTO all kind of working together, and this thing is happening. Like, this thing's happening, and that's my official statement.
I just want a brief round of applause for Megan, who has taken this on on top of everything else that Megan does, is going to build this playground with her bare hands.
Jeff, I really, those students and their parents have done, I, I can't believe how much work.
Yes, agreed.
Jackie, you know, it was
And all of it would have been for naught if you weren't there to facilitate.
Well, thank you, that's
This was a wonderful student-led effort.
It really is, they're amazing.
And I think that that, you know, that Megan and we've discussed this and everyone, and and it's really nice when you speak to members of the community about this and how, what we hope to have happening there, that it was such a student-led effort, is, again, is wonderful.
Yeah, it is, this is like the eels, these are the things that I pick up on.
Nothing like the eels.
It's just like the eels in the sense that I, someone comes up with something
Nobody's going to have nightmares about the playground.
Or her idea, and I, it brings me such joy to be part of doing something that is, you know, for the kids, and there's so much bad news, a fire hose of bad news in the world.
Planting the trees.
But we are, we are planting, we're going to be in the trees, so.
Swings.
Okay. I'm going to plant a playground.
All right, I'll meet you there.
That's it, thank you all.
Action items.
Oh, that's me too, okay, great. All right.
Follow along, this is going to be a lot of fun. It's going to move fast, but I trust you're going to pick it up real quick.
Go ahead, Megan. When we do have a big crowd in the room or online, this is when people drop off.
Yes, this is when everybody leaves.
Because it's part, yeah, yes. Okay. Motion to approve the minutes of the 4/8/2025 regular and executive session minutes.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you, Sam. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries?
Motion to approve the minutes of the 5/13/2025 regular session minutes.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you, Sam. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries?
I forgot to say aye. Motion to approve the minutes of the 5/19/2025 Finance Subcommittee Meeting.
Can I get a second?
Second. All those Is that, I'm getting, is that fine, is that, okay.
Pretty good, yeah. The word submitted is, but I think it's fine. So we have a second, thank you, Sam. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Motion carries?
Motion to approve the school payroll dated 5/15/2025 in the amount of $620,503.49.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you, Sam. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
abstain.
Thank you, Eric. Very briefly, Tim? Eric's wife works for the district, so he can't vote on any matters that concern finances. Go ahead.
Motion to approve the accounts payable authorization for payment dated 5/15/2025 in the amount of $208,936.09.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you, Sam. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
abstain.
Thank you, Eric. Motion carries?
Motion to approve the school payroll dated 5/29/2025 in the amount of $739,728.55.
Second.
Thank you, Sam. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
abstain.
Thank you, Eric. Motion carries?
Motion to approve the accounts payable authorization for payment dated 5/29/2025 in the amount of $375,781.41.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you, Sam. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
abstain.
Thank you, Eric. Motion carries? Okay. Well, folks, tis nearly the end of an era. I'm here to announce that our next meeting will be on July the 22nd, and our illustrious superstar, Dr. Michelle Ball, will be joining in the seat next to me. So she'll be able to hear how much I wiggle around and how much my chair sweets, and the gentle thonk of my Stanley on the table.
Thonk is out there.
Really exciting, right? So yes, the meetings are a bit lighter, we'll have July 22nd and August 12th. They will be relatively brief and relatively light, and then we are going to be kicking off the end of the term work, which there's quite a bit of, with monthly meetings, one in September, two in October, one each in November and December, and then this committee will be domed.
Yeah. Elections, I was like, what, what's happening?
I was like, oh, yeah, elections.
Could be any number of things. So we are now going to move into executive session. For the eyes in the sky that are watching us from East Hampton Media, I will tell you that we are going to recess directly from the executive session.
I'm sorry, I got to say a couple of things really quick. I just wanted to say and just acknowledge that we had an amazing graduation ceremony. Thank you for those who gave speeches and who came, and we sat in a very, very warm gym, but that was a great call by Principal Evans, he led a great, and Sue Wilson, great graduation. That was really fun to watch. It was also tied up with a really fun kindergartner, seniors
Can you relay this really quickly, because I can't
That was lovely, yeah, it's so sweet, so
Maureen, will you tell them what happened?
Please.
And also give credit to who thought of it.
Exactly.
It was just so beautiful.
So what happened is Jill, passing it to Jill, who is, who is head of school, really wanted, and her son was graduating, on some memorable experience where the kindergartners and the graduates met. So she had hats made, so the graduates gave a hat. They met in the field halfway, and the graduates gave a hat to each of the kindergartners.
It was a little message.
Yes.
They were asked to say, what would you say to your kindergarten self? And what did Bill say, the top two responses were like, be kind and make friends with everyone. And the third, yes, and the third was, it goes so fast.
Geez, it was a really lovely idea. There's videos on social media, if you would like to cry, I encourage you to watch it. It was really sweet, cry for good reasons. I just wanted to highlight the ELF showcase, and there was an amazing middle school transition night, and the admin and the educators and staff at our schools are doing so many amazing things, listening to feedback from parents and from school council, and, you know, things happen slowly, and I know that, you know, there's, there's miles to go before we sleep, but there's so many amazing things that have popped up, so it was just, it was really
The band is going to Broadway tomorrow.
And the band's going to Broadway. I mean, it's just so good.
Okay, now we can roll call. So East Hampton Media will be adjourning directly from executive session pursuant to Massachusetts General Law C-30A S-21A2 to conduct collective bargaining sessions with the EEA Support Unit. So we are going to be moving into the back room, we will say goodnight from there. Goodnight, East Hampton. Do you need us to move to go into it or? Motion? Want a motion? Okay, entertain a motion to move into executive session?
So moved.
Thank you, can I get a second?
Again.
Thank you, Eric. Roll call in, correct? Tim?
Yes.
Sam, name. Eric? Megan?
Megan Harvey.
Laura Scott present, Sam?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes, Nicole, back room.
There's people in the back room.